I went to call this meeting to order for variation order number one zero zero eight dash two two eleven seventy eight. Oswald at seven P M on September the twelfth, two thousand and twenty two.
I understand.
Yes.
I'm gonna excuse myself with compliments for me. For variation.
Thank you. We have supporting material for variation order number one zero zero six dash two two lot twenty four block five plan three three six eight one. The L T O more division to construct an accessory building within the side yard setback from six feet, one point eight meters to three feet. Point nine one four meters in residential mobile home subdivision zone. Local administration.
Deputy Mayor and Council, the owner of eleven seventy and Oswald submitted the variation application. The application was completed with exposed apartments. Again, this is for the building or construction of the accessory building to the side of their principal home. And they are looking for a side yard setback. Our current zoning law, zoning by law requires six feet. They are asking for this to be reduced to three feet. All of the other setback requirements are in alignment. This was posted for public notice and notices were sent to all utilities, housing, fire, emergency services. And today, no objection from the members.
Thank you.
Anthony. So just to know, this is the public's opportunity to come and speak in favor or speak against this project?
So with that, if you would like to support or object to this, please come forward, state your name and address and your reasons that for your support or objection. For a second time. Presenters for support or objection to this part. Third and final time, anybody wishing to support or object to this project, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll call for adjournment. Council Valentine, Deputy Mayor Lenmark, all in favor. Karen, thank you. This will now move on to the agenda. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh four P M for September the twelfth, two thousand and nine, regular meeting of council. I would also like to acknowledge that we're on the traditional land, three by nature's ways that Cree Nation and we are homeland of the Maytee. And that we are all treaty people. Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda? Council Ellsworth, Council Valentin, all in favor. Karen. Next, propose the community comments and feedbacks. Please again, state your name and ask your question. Second time, community comments, feedbacks. State your name, ask your question. Third and final, any community comments or feedback? Thank you, seeing none, we will move on. Number five, adoption of minutes. Five point one is a very, very minute spent very late order number one zero zero six dash two two, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty two. Resolution number two zero two two one six two, moved by Deputy Mayor Lenmark, second by Council Valentino. Be resolved that the minutes of the public hearing for variation order number one zero zero six dash two two, open council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba. On Monday, August twenty second, be adopted as circulated. Miss Rachel.
Nothing further.
Any comments, council? Over the question, all those in favor? Karen. Five point two is adoption of this for the regular meeting of the council, August twenty second. Resolution number two zero two two one six three, moved by Deputy Mayor Lenmark, second by Council Valentino. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty two, be adopted as circulated. Miss Rachel.
Nothing further.
Deputy Mayor Lenmark. Any questions, council? Over the question, all those in favor? Karen. Eight point three is adoption of minutes for committee of the whole, September the sixth, two thousand and twenty two. Resolution two zero two two one six four, moved by Council Valentino, seconded by Council approved. Be it resolved that the minutes from the meeting of the whole meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Tuesday, September the sixth, two thousand and twenty two, be adopted as circulated. Miss Rachel.
Nothing further.
Council members? Over to the question, all those in favor? Karen. Next, we're moving into resolutions and as the first point is a concept transition to meet these.
Okay, so general, six point one, motion to lift from table, resolution number twenty twenty two, one fifty eight, a resolution to approve a subdivision for part one, one, plan two nine, two, one, zero. And answer the fifteen, seven, eight, dash, zero, three. But he began. Just give him a second here. And mover or six point second, Council Valentin, mover, Council Valentino, second, all in favor. There. When moving to resolution for your signpost there.
Oh, is anyone?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see him, huh? I oppose.
I'm sorry.
Well, you're good, still here. So remember, six point two, resolution for subdivision application files. One hundred forty five, sixty, two, seven, 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 seventy seven, for the part of lot one five, one hundred two, nine, two, one, zero. And fifteen, seven, that, yeah. Yeah. Whereas the city of Thompson has been advised about proposed subdivision application to provide some of the part of lot one, plan twenty nine, two, ten, and uncertainly fifteen, seven, eight, that's who we get. Now, therefore, we have resolved that council advice, municipal relations, community and regional fine branch, subject to the conditions provided by municipal relations, community and regional progress. That amendment, unique boarding and lodging and conditionally use within the provincial building of city of Thompson is only by law, number eighteen, eighty one, dash, twenty twenty two, twenty twelve. As a man, will be required prior to file, and the definition of boarding and lodging must also be included. The city of Thompson is only by law, definition section, including the amendment.
Administration, Deputy Mayor. Provincial community planning department received an application on subdivision. The subdivision application was submitted to the agency. No concerns were raised by those agencies. Therefore, the community fighter, Brett Mack, who's joining us tonight by Zoom, has submitted the application to see counsel for the review of approval. Again, as part of the resolution, it was the addition of a condition of one, and I think it should be the condition of. Brett, I guess wants to add anything, this would be your opportunity, is the community fighter, Brett?
Uh, no, everything sounds good to me so far, I'll just. Yeah, council consider the, can consider the application before them and make the resolution.
Any questions? We'll be discussing further.
Oh, Council Member. Can I, as Mr. Mack, a direct question? If, uh, I've been trying to find an answer. If we refuse this and that, what is the process?
Sorry, what's that? If you refuse the subdivision application?
Yes.
Then the applicant can, can appeal to the municipal board, they can appeal council's decision on that rejection.
And is there any cost to the city on that?
Um, there would be cost to the city as part of the process and going to the municipal board and engaging in the process. I'd just like to say that there, from my standpoint, there is no reasonable cause to, to not approve the subdivision application. It's to be considered on the information in front of you right now. And council is to make a resolution based on the information that is part of that application package.
Think it's page five. The application back. When the culture use. Right, as American campground. I got proof of that land being used for other things. That's my fault. I got the problem with subdivision, the same as the campground and already.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you there, council, but if you look on page four of the subdivision application under what is the intended use of the proposed lots? The applicant has indicated cabin rentals.
No, I think five, it has is the current use.
Yeah, the current use is, it's an undeveloped lot, it's part of McCready campground. Not even part of McCready campground, really, it's just an unforced parcel.
What it was, what it was campground, what in?
Cause that's the existing use of the entire surveyed parcel as it currently exists as one entire parcel. It is current use is a campground, as McCready campground. If we want to boil it down to specifics, the site itself is currently unused, but it is part of the title that is associated with McCready campground.
Well, you're telling me in one sentence, is not being used. Then you're telling me in another sentence, is part of McCready campground.
Yeah, it is, it's not being used as part of McCready campground, but it would be considered as part of McCready campground because it's all contained within the same contiguous parcel right now.
Thank you very much. Council, welcome. Thank you, Deputy. I think I have the same question, not the same question, I have a question directed to the same person. Is the man? Then allow, thank you. So earlier, the, one of my colleague, touch on the. Of that, if this, let's say, tonight council decided not to approve, so the applicant allowed to appeal that decision. So what will be causing the city if that happened? Do you have any idea?
No, I can't give you a specific cost. I, that's a something that's associated with the municipal board process and so I'm, I'm unfamiliar with the costs that would be associated with it. Yeah, so I'd just like to, to remind council, I just, sorry, I'd just like to say that, just to make a little reminder, the council has to make an informed decision on the land in question, regardless of ownership. Based on policies in your development plan. Um, the policies contained within your current development plan allow for this sort of development.
Here, one second, please, that, to the manager.
Yeah, further to the cost, if this were to be appealed to the municipal board, city staff would have to put in time to defend council decision, provide whatever information municipal board wanted. The municipal board, if it works like the public utilities board, would then assess its own costs and assign them to whoever it decides to assign them. So.
Yeah, it's, it's an R J S task for city staff to, to engage in a process with the municipal board.
So, can I get your, the council, hold the first? I don't mind following up, like, we're just all up to the same. Thank you. Because I start reading some of the, the bylaw and the recommendation. Apparently, I, this is what I have in trouble myself, because I understand there's two different thing. One is subdivision application, one is the urban hall, allow or not allow to use. I understand there's four or two different type of thing, but in my, in my view, there's gotta be some sort of, it is the same package, but you just break it to two parts to discuss. So when I look at some of the comment and some of the condition use, it is supposed to get approval before you're allowed to do that. Or changing the bylaw condition you, but some is already developed without, that's why I want to ask the mission, provide me, maybe there's some sort of agreement prior to this. I understand the subdivision is totally different than what I'm asking, but it's still, it's one package in my opinion. Without knowing that, to me to move forward is pretty tough, because if the rules be break, I don't want to break the, the third time, so that's why I need to know that.
So. Yeah, no, there's no, there's no rules being broken here, or else we wouldn't have approved the subdivision application in our office. Everything is within the Planning Act regulations, everything is within the regulations of your development plan and your zoning bylaw. Zero rules are being broken in this process. If there were, the application would not have made it to council with a recommendation from the province to approve the application.
Yeah, and just further to that, um, right now, we're considering the subdivision, any of the conditional uses or variations that would have to come would come at a future meeting. Right now, this is purely on the subdivision application, so, so that's the two separate decisions that are made at different points in the process.
Yeah, approving the subdivision application right now does not guarantee that the conditional use will be approved. The applicant will still have to come to council to apply for their conditional use. As part of final approval for the subdivision.
Just a clarification, one of the, and then, so in other words, like, the subdivision, even though it's approved by tonight, in the future, let's say, the applicant want to come back and ask for condition use. If it's, if, let's say, that time, it decides not to allow that condition use, that means there, I think, can we sit on two pieces of land that one is kind of useless. They cannot do the job, right?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question, could you?
Cause there are conditions that are being placed, the subdivision would die, if that's correct.
Yeah, it becomes back to council and council does not want to grant his conditional use approval, his application for subdivision would ultimately not be approved by the province.
Thank, thank you, and, thank you. Uh, Council fellow.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to say that I was one of the, uh, number who supported tabling this. At the time, we had requested the condition of sale of that property. And I had thought there was a role for the city to play in determining whether or not there may have been a condition preventing the subdivision. It's my understanding now that's done in a different level of government, so by, they have no concerns about this.
Yeah, if any concerns that may come from, if there was a development agreement or caveat on title that currently exists would be represented in the status of title as part of the application. And we have a completely clean title with no parameters preventing subdivision or further development on that parcel.
Thank you. Council Valentine.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna support this moving forward, this is just one step in the process. Uh, so with the fact that Bill thirty seven making appeal to municipal board when it's a clean application, the recommendation from the provinces to approve this. I wouldn't see the need for unnecessary cost for the city to have to defend anything with municipal board, so I'll be supporting this application tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I thank you, Brett, as well for the explanation. I guess my, my question is now if it's approved tonight, I'll roll it before it comes back to council.
Um, ultimately, that will be at the, the applicant's discretion when they want to come to council to apply for their conditional use. Um, provided council does approve the subdivision tonight, I will get a resolution in my office from council saying the subdivision has approved. I prepare a conditional, or sorry, pardon me, the resolution, this is, um, yeah, I will prepare a conditional approval letter for the applicant. Um, in which they have a two-year timeframe to complete all of their conditions of approval. One of them will be the conditional use from the city of Thompson. So, you know, provided somewhere within that two-year window, he could come to council, so you know, he could come in a month, he could come next year, sort of thing. It all depends on how quickly the applicant will, will move on that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The only disconcerting fact for me is that if council was to not approve it, and then would certainly go to the government at the end of the day. Regardless of what we do in this chamber, uh, it really doesn't matter, as far as I'm concerned, it can go straight up. So if we say yes, then the process will move forward, if we say no, then you take it to the next level where we're out of the loop. And all we see at the end of the day is costs to the city for the work that our administration people would, would have to do. So I certainly understand overall gains, thank you.
Further, I'll be supporting this as well. Uh, I see that right now, there is just subdividing a piece of, peaceful land. With a part of the property not being used in any way. So when, when it's subdivided, with whatever use, but will see the conditional use for. Uh, it will be something that gets that, and it's revenue for the community, it's a business for the community. A bit, and that's not money the waters, tonight is just about the subdivision and piece of land. Out of an existing piece of land, which had conditions of use. Uh, this part is gonna be separate, right? And then we can, yeah. Bring forward what they want later, thank you. Any other comments? So, can I, uh? Is there a new resolution? Any bodies regarding? Offered, okay, we need by Council Valentine, second by Council Valentin, or Deputy Mayor, all for the, all of there?
Hi.
Both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett.
No, thank you all, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to come speak with you guys, and I hope you have a good rest of your meeting and a good evening.
Thank you.
I did that to you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to declare compliments again on the inside, so.
Uh, not, is it the next one?
Yep. Six point eight, six point two.
Straight over here.
Or some. I said we do.
Six point three is a resolution to approve the variation order number one zero zero eight, two, two, eleven seventy eight, Oswald and Drive. Resolution number two zero two two one six five, moved by a council approved, seconded by Council Valentino. Whereas the city of Thompson is, is in receipt of variation order application, number one zero zero eight dash two two eleven seventy eight, Oswald and Drive. Lot twenty four, block five, plan three, three, six, eight, one, P L T O more division for the following. Construct an accessory building within the side at yard setback from six feet, one point eight meters to three feet, point nine one four meters. In a residential mobile home subdivision zone, R M H S one. And whereas, under the provisions of the Planning Act, a public hearing has been held to hear representations for or against the variation order. Now, therefore, be it resolved that council approved variation order number one zero zero eight dash twenty two dash eleven seventy eight, Oswald. And I will note, that was the hearing we had just before this, and there was no comments on it. Uh, local administration?
This evening, uh, yeah, the order of eleven seventy eight, Oswald, submitted a full complaint, variation application. This has been reviewed by our building inspector. Uh, again, they're looking for a side yard setback reduction from six feet to three feet for the construction of an accessory building on the property. Uh, the variation order was circulated in accordance with the provincial planning act. Uh, it was posted for the two week period, and certainly to all homeowners within a hundred years. Um, and to the high growth district, there have been strong, and the policy fire emergency services were notified and the victim, and no objective received from any of those. As mentioned, the public hearing was held this evening, at which time, no, no objection received at the public hearing either. The recommendation from administrations to approve the rates.
Thank you. Council Cruz, will there be any comments?
Yeah, I approve this, uh, resolution. The fact that someone is investing money into your, your trailer porch is good, good news in my opinion. And with the tight locks there, you could assume a negotiation.
Thank you, any other comments, council? Council member.
Uh, good question. Is this a rental property?
Uh, is this a rental property?
We would not have any information on that, the variance is submitted as it is.
Council man.
Thank you, man. Just a quick question, how big is this, this law? The reason I'm asking, when I look at the minimum required setback required, the front yard is thirty three feet. So I don't think they have such a rule to set back thirty three feet, so how big is the lot under the B T C?
There is a, I believe. That's part of the public hearing, there was a sketch, uh, the sketch is, sorry.
The sketch shows that the lot is eighty three fifteen.
Eighty three.
Eighty three feet, gotcha, right.
Forty two, forty four. And you set back thirty three, that is only a piece of, a bit of the building, right? That is, uh, follow the.
The, the sketch is attached under the variation hearing, and it's already been.
There was a previous variation.
That's right. And it's already been reviewed by the building inspector, it says that it meets the requirements.
I, I personally don't have any issue, because we do a lot of those setback requirement, and usually, to me, it doesn't bother me, it's not, it's not. I believe all the waters are in the area, so there's no need to be, well, not to say. I believe all the waters are really new over that area. So there's no need to be, well, not to say nothing. Excellent can be happened. So the backyard, I don't think the city needs to be booming that often anymore use using compared to before. So I guess uh it's okay that.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh having grown up in that area, I can tell you six feet is a lot of space in that in that area. I'm uh I imagine the setback on the trailers is probably a foot if that, if any, uh in the side yard. Um so I'm happy to uh a supportive variance on on a property that person pays taxes for if you pay tax, we should be on the
Thank you. Any other comments? Saying that, we'll call for the question. Hold on some favor. Opposed? Karen? Can somebody give us a fair and different grounds for this? Six point four is a resolution to approve the Mandelbach Hydro Land Lease Agreement. Resolution two zero two two one six six, moved by council approved, seconded by council Valentino. Here it result that council approved the land lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Manitoba Highwood in the city of Thompson being part one, lot one and part two. Part lot two plan seven six oh two, PLT O North Division with administration?
Yes, good evening. Uh this is a land lease that was previously held by C M F Holdings. Uh they've occupied it and currently hold a public to a twenty year land lease. They have recently uh sold buildings constructed in the property Manitoba Highwood. And as such, Manitoba Highwood was requesting a new, a claim to lease. Uh the lease document is uh pretty much identical to what was there uh previously. Uh it will be a new uh lease kicking in this year and expiring in twenty fourteen two. Uh the rates, lease rates are what they were before. It's that rate plus three percent uh per year. Uh again, no, no concerns uh from our side because there will be a dispute between both parties, legal departments and the recommendation of the Congress to go ahead and accept uh land lease.
Thank you. Councilor Cruz?
Uh I just want to comment that I think see that there's the uh increase of three percent per year to accommodate uh some extra revenue for the city's always been starting.
And yeah, just to note also that um these zoning by law amendments and conditional use applications have already been passed by council to support this development moving forward.
Anything else? All right, Bert. Councilman Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm uh curious about the excluded area in red on the back. Uh obviously, that looks a lot like a secret name base. Uh to me, can you explain a little bit about that property and has that had any impact on this at all?
They, the area in red is uh below the
Project lane.
Flash severance line. There, thank you, the severance line and for the Manitoba Hydro agreement. So that's why that piece of parcel is not uh included as part of the lease. It's below the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Coburn?
So these means your four thousand seven hundred seventy two, seventy four, did that annual?
Yeah, yes.
That's annual.
Yes.
And that building
Increases to present.
Yes, that building was least, it was listed for one point two million. Now my house is right now is valued around two forty and I'm paying that every year.
So so they're paying the lease, but they also pay the taxes on that property.
The taxes.
So they will receive a tax bill for the operations, the business that's on that property and they also pay a lease to us separate from that.
So what's probably taxing that though?
Proper. I don't have that in front of me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Saying that, open the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Karen? Six point five is the resolution to approve the tabulation prices for rural construction and to allocate additional money from the infrastructure reserve. Resolution two zero two two one six seven, moved by council Valentino, seconded by council approved. Here it result that council approved the recommendation of the director of development and technical services and awarded two thousand twenty two local street renewal program, be repressed at Nelson Road in various other locations to Maple Leaf construction for their tender price of six million seven hundred and sixty five thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars with additional taxes as per tender file number one oh two seven dash two zero two two. And be a further result that the capital budget be increased from five million to seven minute point two million to cover the construction and design engineering. And be a further result that the cost to the city of Thompson for the two point one million dollar increase will be three hundred and fifty one thousand dollars, sixteen point six seven percent to be born from the infrastructure reserve. With administration?
Yeah, so uh in response to our two ten twenty seven, uh two zero two two, two bits submitted, uh both method requirements. Uh one can make three point commerce river, uh as you do the table, we are looking to award the uh rural renewal work to Maple Leaf in value statement. Uh this, both performance have responded saying that uh the work will not really begin this fall and start uh in the spring, even resourcing. Uh we had five million as part of our budget set aside this year. So to get up to the value to cover not only this but also the design engineering. Uh if you recall, you brought eighteen comms uh working on the design engineering for this. So when you're looking at the map, when you're auto debit from six point seven to seven point two, that difference is the estimated cost for eighteen columns divided by this year. So looking to increase the capital budget to uh make the requirements. Uh again, we're looking to uh our recommendations to approve or want the contract to Maple Leaf. And to increase the budget as well.
Thank you. And any further questions? Okay, I want to uh, Councilor Valentino?
Uh thank you, Mr. Spook. I'm gonna be supporting this uh resolution tonight with the excess money coming out of our infrastructure reserve. Uh unfortunately, it's gonna start in the spring of twenty twenty three. But uh things have happened in the world and I appreciate uh our management team being creative and willing to design and having this all start in twenty twenty three to uh to get this ISF project uh underway next year. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Woodburn?
Um yes, thanks, Mayor Spook. Um I I wanted to start it to clarify the comments I made in committee and and just state that falling behind in the the paving project isn't desirable, I don't think by any means, but um what I wanted at that time was to acknowledge that our admin has accomplished a significant amount of work between normal city business and these three large capital projects. And to just point out that the water and sewer is going ahead where in some places at least, that'll be a condition to pay further and to point out um as well that these construction tender packages as per the last committee meeting will be, will be going out in December, January, I believe, instead of July, like the last ones did. So hopefully we can find some more competition there. And yes, I'll be supporting this tonight and look forward to see that work happening in the spring.
Thank you. Anyone else? Congresswoman?
Uh the extra money come out over infrastructure reserve. Will then make an impact to our plan in the future, earth of our roads?
I think.
So this will draw down on some of the ICIP money, investing Canada money from the other two levels of government in terms of the money taken over reserve that, you know, reserve money that council had could have been used for something else. Uh but it was really earmarked for these sorts of projects under that use of that reserve.
Councilor Almar?
That's thank you, Mayor. Um yes, I'll be supporting this uh with the ISF program and projects. All the funding we got for this, the twin project uh for roads, um we realize these people are getting impatient. And they like to see some of this uh project going forward. Um was it a project of this size and scope? And it's the water and sewer projects that are going on and the work that our staff are doing on the land. And everything else that we've got going on and everything that's happened. I'm really happy to see this. At this point, you know, once we, if we approve this, the tenders are signed. For next, the project starts in the spring and we've got to move on. Also, uh there's now a good news thing happening is that tenders going out earlier this uh this year, so that's prepared for next year. Uh ahead of time. So it won't be in the fall when we're getting the tender. Which is a good idea and tough to do sometimes with uh budgets uh with when the columns and the fence release money. In the case uh sorry that we're going behind, we're going to pay a little extra, but that is something that uh in the current climate with the the amount of inflation that we're seeing over, the faster we get itself on these other projects, uh better. I also know that our staff looked at trying to book all five, six years of projects together. They didn't, it's not like they didn't think of this and try and uh use on this scope to get things done through. It's just the the amount of contractors and cities and where they're working with other ISF projects, it's tough to deal with them. Uh glad we're here and some will be an extra part, but uh good to be here. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to acknowledge that you, Mayor Landmark, welcome. Councilor Alsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um we didn't do any bait in the twenty twenty one. We're not doing no bait in the twenty twenty two. We say the spring. Should be an optimist, I guess, but I don't, I've never seen him come in spring. That may be because they didn't have the the tender by then. But I'm doubtful of the beer. There's lots of work there in certain one, tons of it. From the two big companies that we see. I would like to try a different approach. We always saw, I mean, this is quite an increase in cost to start off with. Uh even though you say it's three hundred and fifty one thousand for a cop loss, but out of the old thing, it's it's two point nine million, that's the L P L. What if we were to cancel the contract, let's be careful, and take twenty one, twenty two, twenty three and combine them? We probably save enough on mobilization costs, hotel costs and everything else to probably cover our two point one. And we probably would still get it in early enough to still get it done in twenty three, even if it was June, July, August. That's just my thought. I'm not saying I'm against the resolution. I'm trying to look at saving the money because at the end of the day, we keep doing this. The twenty kilometers we talk we're doing won't be twenty kilometers. The money is what we've got. You know, earlier we talked about other big, huge projects in other meetings that we've got to deal with. I believe Thompsonites would like to get at least twenty kilometers out of this money. But the way we're going, it ain't gonna be twenty kilometers. Not concerned about that. Because if we go it the way we're doing it right now, next year we'll be back here talking about cost ain't going down. It ain't going down. It's still going up everywhere. Inflation's watching the road. So that's something I I think we should consider uh to get a bigger bank for a buck. We're talking over Manitoba, not not Winnipeg area. Thank you.
Thank you. Well?
Just just in uh response to that well with question. We actually did consider that providing uh contracts. Um the discussion with us and the design engineer, uh there was a lot of risk in doing that. Resources are tight, all of these companies, and it was felt that yes, there is an economy to scale uh if you are considering there, but the risk of uh putting a paid contract with a lot of uh here, we will not get any of this back for bits of the soul out there. This will save us. So that decision or that uh that discussion and third discussion was not at this point. We are still fine, as as Bert said, we are still fighting to tender our twenty three workout December of this year. So we're gonna have kind of two separate files working next year. Either one company gets them or two, you won't hold that picture both tenders though. But I can't tell you that that was, that was considered.
Just I can follow up there. Thank you for that, but my my mind goes back to the first year of council. First year of council. If we had that support, moved it on the asphalt plan, we might have been saving millions, not hundreds of thousands. So did that been on as well? We put ourselves in a better position as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um yeah, I've uh listened intently to what some of my fellow councilmen just said. Uh this is not a small increase by any means. It's fifty percent of ours, fifty percent increase over what we had expected in uh paying for uh twenty twenty two's budget, even though it's happening in twenty twenty three. I I agree with Councilor Alsworth that this is we it would seem to me uh that it would be best served by combining that work, tendering it out. The problem with this type of uh environment is that you have many, many different entities with lots of dollars chasing not many contractors. So you, just the nature of that is inflationary. Um so the increase in cost is not unexpected. Nonetheless, to have that type of increase for such small amount of work is uh that's something I I'm planning to support. Uh for that reason, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been listening to some of my colleague comments and also administration. I want to clarify a couple of things. Number one, when you say this one is coming out from the uh reserve sixteen point six seven percent which is three hundred and fifty one thousand of the increase to one two point one million dollars from the infrastructure reserve. Where is those infrastructure money come from? The reason I'm asking because I believe the ISA we cannot use the government money to match it. So where's the infrastructure reserve come from? I believe those are from the gas tax or GST that we said whatever, right?
Infrastructure reserve is going to comfort any surpluses that uh council has put in the past, any investment that has been put into those reserves. Uh we've checked, yes, you're correct, that it was gas tax or whatever the new name for gas taxes. Um that you wouldn't be able to stack that, but our CFO has identified that, yes, there are funds there that are stackable in that reserve.
Okay, I I like to follow up. Because of the increase, I also want to clarify this. So the ISA funding approved is forty million dollars. So with this two point one million dollars increases, that mean we getting forty two million?
No, the ISA allocation remains the same.
So to see the forty million dollars money that we're talking about.
That's correct.
So, okay, so our fortune sixteen point six seven percent. Doesn't matter where it come from. Our portion is about eight million dollars to match this forty million dollars ISA funding. Am I right?
If that's the number, yes, it's our our portion is sixty point six.
So when I look at this, we are not doing something better. We are using the future money just to offset this increase. But in the future, we might facing way more, way more money that we need to come up. But again, I kind of agree with the Council Alsworth, since we have no, no project two thousand twenty one. No project two thousand twenty two. If I'm not reading this wrong, they say even though we approved right now, we're trying to increase two point one million dollars just for two thousand twenty two project, but they will not start to two thousand twenty three anyway. Am I right? Based on what the review is. So why not? To use the money smart way. We already have money put aside for twenty one. Now we already budget five million for twenty two. We propose a book project something for twenty three as well, the next term. So we did three budget. Why can't we just tender out with a mega bigger contract instead of paving three mil uh three kilometer? Now probably seven altogether with three years. So I bet you will be a trend way more contractor, but I'm not saying there will be a bad solution right now. The situation is created by the federal. When they release the ISA program, everywhere, everywhere get the same money. So we all compete with the same sort of money. And we may, and we may get the same money. So we all compete with the same sort of money. The inflation could be happen, the competition could be there because they already had so much of project, so much money floating around. They're not really looking to Thompson right now. That's why they simply throw the money out there to say hopefully that we can accept it. And the way that we keep on going, the 40 million will run out very quick. Then what? What is the solution? I'm not expert. I'm just here to look at the number I based on the calculation. We will not sustain. Yes, maybe tonight we're going to say people put 21, 2.1 million just to make sure 2022 project going on. What if next year 2022 really tender out? The money come back, four more million dollars extra. So now we go short $6 million on and on and on, based on all the ideology about inflation. That is not the solution in my way to look at contracting out for a job. And also don't forget, this 2022, we missed the window throughout the grace period of time that we can tender out. We didn't have any meeting. From November to March, we missed the opportunity to talk about this. That's why we tender out so late. Now the contractor had no more time to do it, had to postpone to next year. I must point it out. So now, if we go to do that this year. Next year will be way worse than this year. So I urge all my councillors, colleagues today, we should cancel this. And look into a better next year, beginning of the year, on tender out with the biggest contract. Bigger footage, maybe there will be better pricing. And I kind of agree with councillor Hobbit earlier, the inflation can become down. The interest rate can become down, but right now just panic. Everybody panic about it. I don't know what happened next year. That's why the contractor will not give you the right price for next year. So I, I urge everybody to agree to cancel this 2022 and put in the biggest budget for 2023 combined. All that together. Of course, we go to saving the transportation. That's for sure. I know. Then we can save with three times. Now we only pay one time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? You can add anything.
One of the other issues we got to think about when we're doing a bigger scale, which I don't disagree with completely. Is we have a water sewer project going on and 40 million dollars worth of work going on. Whenever we excavate the ground, then you don't want to be paving the road right above that, that, right away, that year. So that's one of the things that our administration, the engineers have written that, so that we do those things. We want to make sure we put things underground before we fix the road because we're really bad if we dig it up the following year. So that, that's one thing I'm going to keep in mind. I make a proposal, I think that we move ahead with this project that's in front of us right now. But. Councillor administration talked to the engineer that we have this multi-year project. Let's see if we can combine 23 and the next two sections of the project. At least this way we're moving forward, we're getting something done here. We, we have five years left of this, right? So if we can forget one of these things done now, then maybe we can get the, I don't know if we can get that ready in time for two years worth of work in one. Or the plan that we have, right, because we're going to do sections. Which are dictated really by when the water sewer was moving ahead of. So what we were doing Westwood, say, water and sewer. This next summer, we weren't going to do Westwood Road until two years later. So they, our administration, their engineers are well aware of what their plan. See if they can combine more of those things. So we got a little bit bigger scale. I, I don't know if this, it would be feasible and a better thing, but I make that suggestion. Because it's not going to get cheaper next year.
And you, Madam Mayor, I'm just, I think those are wise comments from Deputy Mayor. That doesn't change my position on this though. By accepting it, I think I had said 50%, I think the number is 44, which is. I rounded up, it's close. By accepting a 44% increase over what we had expected to pay. If you were going to do that to me and my business, the price of whatever I was settling next year would go up. Clearly, because you'd be, you're willing to pay it this. So that's not a symbol I, I want to note there. Again, I'll reiterate that I think we're better served than larger projects. For next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certain listening and definitely what Steve said. I guess one of the questions I would raise tonight is, I'm much, right now, water and sewer, we got done so far. Including what we did on Riverside. Can we actually do more paving? Is there three kilometers of paving that needs to be done? Is it five? Is it seven? That's one part of the question. The second part question, if you want to talk with the engineers. How long? Do we wait or any other city wait for comparison? I know you're in northern Manitoba there. For the settling of that ground, once you, you know, you dug it up to replace pipes. There's nobody in their right minds but sit here in this chamber and agree to pave something that's not being done with pipes. I mean, that's ludicrous, even thinking about that. We want to pave roads that's already completed with waters and then pipes. So I think that's the question, and I don't know if the administration has got an answer to how many kilometers that we currently have and will add by the spring of 2023 for paving.
Any comments, Bob?
Sorry. Clarify your question, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll slow down. I'm going to be calm on results, pavement that we need to do now that have already got the new water and facility in place. And I much will be ready by the spring of 2023 if we were to look at combining three years. Do we have enough?
So the work, I have to go back to now and find out if there are enough of the top ahead or not.
So then I would suggest we table that, I know we do get the information because it is quite the conversation. And rather seeing it defeated or approved, I think it's imperative that we understand what we're talking about. If we don't have enough pavement to do by, you know, combining an extra year, then, then we're. We've, we've got to pay, we've got to pay. So that's my question. So I'm going to move that we table it off, we give the information.
There's a second. It's a while that it's not. But we know, I don't think this is accurate, but we know we've got paving for the next, for the next five years of the project. It's roughly, next year it's about five kilometers. I think a year after that is five and a half kilometers. It's seven or four, I think it's, but that's the map or not, but that's where we are. This was a later year of all of the rest against the town. We're essentially flat. Now remember, not every, not every road, sorry, not every road that's got the water which right now is covered. With, under the ISAP. For example, Deerwood, we're only doing part of it under the ISAP road project. The rest of it is going to be rehabilitated as part of the water project. So that's why I have to go back to, to all the contracts, look at these numbers, because they're not all. You know, we're doing two kilometers of pipe this year, but not all two kilometers of roads are part of ISAP. Some of them are being rehabilitated as part of the water.
And plus we have roads that are being rehabilitated, the dash fault that aren't getting crushed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think we have, we have, we have, the debate can't hold. We have a motion on the floor to table it. It's a reseconder. Councillor, all in favor? Post? It's not tabled.
Madam Mayor, I ask upon a curmudgeon's just to clarify at this point. Just because the conversation's gone in two different directions. This work for 2022, 2022 will be done in 2023. But there will also be a parcel of work in 2023 that will be done in 2023. So there really isn't an increase. It's, if I understand correctly, it's being planned for next year anyway. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I just have a clarifying question. This is 10 years old. We have the tender, right? What is the date that we need to verify? If there's a.
Yeah, their pricing is valid for within the 60 days. As of when the tenders were received, we're maybe we've learned that, got in August. 10. And just to add, the, the reason why we're coming tonight and on a technical month ago is that's where we were reviewing the possibility of providing scopes. The possibility we changed in scopes. How do we manage to be able to ISAP recur and how we can entry funded? We had to go to the NSO to determine whether we need a public hearing of the result of the budget increase. So those were all the clarifiers part that we had to do prior to getting here tonight.
Okay, Councillor Valentin first.
I've got my hand long time ago. Please, thank you. Let me debate this way maybe better. I, I hear very loud about Deputy Mayor concerned about the role and the sewer problem. Am I right? 2022 project, this role we supposed to pay, the water is already done anyway, right? That's why we're ready to pay.
The 3.5, that's, that's ready to go. There's nothing, there's nothing.
Right? So even though we moved this project combined to next year and do it together, we're not affected the water and sewer anyway, right?
If we do the 3.5 now in spring, there's.
No, 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 the project's supposed to do it this year, 2022. There's nothing. Affected the water and sewer anyway, right? Yes, ready to go.
Those roads ready to go.
Yeah, ready to go. So now because of the, the timing, the contractor cannot do it this year, so they go do it next. So that portion 2022, nothing to do with the water and sewer. Can I put it that way?
There was some scheduling that had to be dealt with because, for example, Beaver Crescent is part of the roadwork. Okay, and if you all know how Beaver Crescent's laid out, they're doing a lot of work right here. So it was a scheduling thing. They made sure the water was got out of that area before the paving was done. Wasn't that we were doing water on.
But the Beaver would be 2025 anyway, right? You're not going to pay by the way, right?
But, no, no, we're not doing water on Beaver. So we're planning to pave the surface renewal on Beaver Crescent. But because Beaver Crescent ties into Deerwood at two locations, we're doing water renewal on Deerwood.
Issue.
Today, right now.
Yeah.
They're on there right now. So we had to schedule it so that the water was out of there before the paving could get done. So ensure that we're not all fighting with the same area, or we're paving an area that's only going to have to be dug up to do a connection in a time to Beaver Crescent. There was that. Plus, there's also the school schedule that we had to schedule out, that we weren't paving Beaver during school.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, 22 project is part of Beaver? Is that what you're trying to explain?
Beaver Crescent was part of the 2020 road project, not water.
I get it. But it's not happened this year anyway, right? So by next year, Deerwood water will be done anyway, right?
Correct.
So the project started 2023. So it's not reject, you know, I mean, not going to be jam in the same area.
That's correct.
Deerwood done, water done. Now we're doing Deerwood. The Deerwood's supposed to be 2022 project because they cannot do it, they go do 2023.
Deerwood paving, part of Deerwood paving is part of the 2020.
Yeah, so now you have 2022 part of Beaver, 2023 we retain around the beginning of the year. What they're dealing with, so perfect, right there. So there's no, no, what you call a spread out of the action, right? You know what I'm saying? So that concern, I think, is part of deputy worry, but it's not because I believe. The water is redone prior to we decide to do the role. So we are beat behind right now. So I think somehow that, that, this suggestion is still value. I assume things of suggestion should really look into it. What I know right now is, I, I say again. The three mobilization combined to one, that is a big saving for me. It doesn't matter how you look at it, that is a saving that I can do or we can control. The inflation dose is not beyond my control, which is our prime minister's creator. So anyhow, I, I still suggest this should be canceled and re-tendered. Thank you.
Can you speak on this reservation? Councillor Valentin.
Thanks, Ursula. Couple of comments. I still, I appreciate Deputy Mayor's comments on this and it actually is knowledge and big contracts. But I like the idea of focusing on this project that's in front of us and maybe. Depending on where we are in our economy for our administration to be creative in the 2023 or 24, 25 combined. Obviously, I think we can see that our director has worked within the scheduling and has worked with these two projects combined. Clearly see that's evident and to councillor Fountain, we can know that some of this is separate from the 2023 project they're going to run. Two projects are going to be going at the same time, but look at this one in front of us today. I'm still. Moving forward with this and will. Go favor this one in front of us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bob, if you have anything on that one, we're done.
I know, not American, but you said.
Anyone else?
Um, I would just like to make my comments that I would like to see this work continue as the tender process as it's definitely been worked very hard for. And I do think 2023, 2024 can be worked together and possibly some more. Just with the costs that have gone up this year, I know the bridge project was 30% plus over on the bridge. There's a project over at the airport that's taking into the 35% increases right now. We've got the commitment for the tender for these prices now. We've got the area done. I really think, especially not having done the work for a couple of years, should we happen to get a nice spring, we get out there, we get this one started early. The fact that I don't think we'd save all that much more mobilization dollars just based on. The scope of the work would be double, so it would be double hotel rooms, double that. So I definitely will support that, but if there's no more. Comments, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of this reservation?
And me, I've got my hands up.
Oh, sorry.
And we crystal clear.
For the vote, okay. In a reported vote as for councillor Wong, all those in favor of this project? But councillor Prue, councillor Valentino, councillor McMyrtle, Mayor Smoot and Deputy Mayor Landmark. Post. But councillor Fountain, councillor Wong, councillor Ellsworth and councillor Palmer in Testmacs. That brings us to the end of our business tonight. I would just like to make a couple of comments. Condolences from Mayor and council, to Elizabeth Fountain on, on her passing this week. There will be a book of condolences, the province is bringing the book of condolences up to Thompson and it will be in the city hall lobby. We will let you know when it is set up. I would like to congratulate Chief Anther and legislature and her new council at Greenwich Way at Free Nation. And we look forward to inviting them to a meeting and. Further reminder that September 20th, which is next Tuesday, will be the last day to register. For a seat as mayor, councillor or school board trustee. And I'd like to encourage all persons that are interested to get ahold of our SEO or Angelo. The board from the school district or at the beginners from the city, if you need more information regarding council, mayor or school district. Have a great evening, everybody. And also here, councillor Fountain, councillor.
Just wanted, it's okay if I said a few words, we're a queen. Many people have probably heard on the news much about the Queen's life. For a lot of people, the passing of the Queen is the first, is the first change of heart that we got in a long time. We've spoken a couple of things. The Queen was the daughter of a father who was brother to the heir to the throne. I've never expected to take the throne. Throughout her childhood, she was never expected to be queen. I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm really gonna miss the Queen. I'm not a big fan of the royals, but, uh. Anyone who could take the king of Saudi Arabia for a drive as a woman is, uh, tops in my book and, uh. As an ambulance driver during World War Two and a lot of very interesting things that she's done. I think it's great for us. Long live the king and may the Queen rest in peace. Thank you for giving me a, I wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Xavier, Paul for Germany, Councilor Valentino, Councilor Prue, all in favor. Good night, everybody. Good evening. Thank you.